Any board member that comes in late, you know, just let me know. Sue?
Sue Stoffey Marlborough.
Judy?
Judy Benson Clark Marlborough.
Lori?
Lori Blake Andover.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin Hebron.
Joe?
Joe O'Connor Hebron.
Jess?
Jessica Dapsis Hebron.
Vin?
Vin Colonna Hebron.
I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. Are there any other board members that just joined us? Okay, student reps?
Dana Shimaleski Marlborough.
Okay, and administration, Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny? Is she still on?
Ari. Sorry. Penny Briscoe, Principal Ram High School.
And Dr. Cerusi?
Michael Cerusi, Principal Ram Middle School.
Okay, and I see we have Mr. Mater here.
Good evening. Chris Mater, Assistant Principal Ram High School.
All right, and our Board Clerk, Karen?
Karen DeCarlo, Board Clerk.
Okay, I just got notified that Rob needs to come in. Scott, can you let him in the meeting? Do you see him?
Right now, I don't see anyone asking to get in. Did he text you, Stephanie?
He did.
Okay, if you could ask him to maybe sign off and try in again, because I've been letting folks in, but I don't see, I haven't seen his request come through yet.
He said he just got in.
Okay.
And Mary Kachewski said that she's having computer problems. So hopefully, she will be able to get in in a few minutes. Rob, are you on?
I am.
Okay. Yeah, we're doing roll call.
Rob Shadow Hebron.
Okay. All right, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go into public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlborough community engagement and attendance at Board of Ed public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. If, I think what we should do is, if you are able, if you're on a computer, if you'd like to speak in public comments, put something in the typed comments so we can see your name, and we can acknowledge that you'd like to speak. If you are on a phone and you cannot do that, you could speak now. So are there any public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing any public comments at this time.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Carol Connolly. I'm on the phone.
Oh, hi Carol. Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much. I just dialed in. The instructions for anyone that dialed in, you have to star six unmute yourself. So thank you so much. It was clear in the instructions. I'm sorry, I missed that at first. So, thank you so much. My name is Carol Connolly. I live at 15 Wildflower Drive. I have a son at Hebron Elementary School and a son at Ram High School. I just wanted to take one minute out of my busy day to really thank the Acting Superintendent, the Board of Education, and all our amazing teachers and staff. I mean, I really made this a priority and said, "I am dialing in," because you have done such an amazing job to keep our children safe and to act on their best behalf. And again, the way that you keep our children safe and act in their best interest is to make sure that our teachers and our staff are doing well, and are safe, and are healthy. So I just really wanted to thank you. I know there was a lot of rhetoric going around in the community. I think people were misinformed. And again, I believe that teachers to a school are like surgeons to a hospital. Without our teachers and our wonderful staff, our children can't attend school. So we thank you as parents, especially our Acting Superintendent, for making sure that our number one priority is our children. But in order to accomplish that they are safe and that they get the best education, you take care of our teachers. So I just really wanted to stress that. I know you can't comment, but again, it's just so important. And when my son got the phone call that said he couldn't come back to school, yes, he was disappointed. But when we talked about the reasons why, he's a freshman and 14 years old, and he said, "Mom, I care so much about my teachers." And when one of his teacher's mother passed away from COVID, he cried. There was tears in his eyes when we read the OBGYN. So I just want to let you know, as a community, we get it, we love you, we support you, and don't listen into the rhetoric, because that's only a few absent-minded people who don't really have the best interest of everyone, and they're just COVID stressed. So anyway, we love you, and that's all I'll say, and thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to go to the comments section. Thank you. And Erin Bucier?
Hi, thank you so much. I would like to piggyback off of what Carol just said. I'm Erin Bucier. I have two children. I'm from Hebron, sorry, have two children at Ram at the high school. I also have a third grader at Hebron Elementary School. And I would just like to, first of all, say, I feel like Ram is handling things really, really well, and I just want to just thank you so much for that, really take everything into consideration. Your jobs are so difficult, and I just can't thank you enough for all the thought that you put into everything that you do, just putting yourself at risk, you know. It's just, I just appreciate it. I have a couple of kids that, you know, need some extra help, and I have to be honest. I have teachers that are on the phone with my children, doing one-on-one meetings while I'm making dinner. That's how late they are up outside of work hours, helping my children, okay? I have teachers that took the time to show my son how to properly link his emails to his meetings. That's, that's a teacher doing that. They're not teaching a subject at that point. They're going above and beyond. And when I say above and beyond, I mean above and beyond, above and beyond. So I would just like to, again, everything that Carol said, I absolutely agree with. I thank the teachers so much. And I just want to say, I'm sorry that you have to look at these nasty messages on social media. I'm sorry that you have to listen to people complaining, because, like Carol said, I know everyone is COVID exhausted, but honestly, you guys, if it wasn't for you guys, our children would have nothing. So I just really, I'm just here basically to show my support, let you all know that we really, truly appreciate what you're doing. And I'm very sorry for the people that have negative comments to make, but, but you know, you guys are doing a great job, and just please, you know, keep doing what you're doing. You have our support.
Thank you. Claudia Riley?
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Claudia Riley from Amson, Connecticut. I have two children in the Ram system, both in the middle school and the high school. I would like to echo the sentiments of the previous commentators. I just want to extend my great, great thanks, my sincere gratitude to teachers and staff in the Ram system for really rising to the challenge, unprecedented challenges actually, and making the best of a very terrible situation. Like Erin, my, one of my children's personality has not been well-suited at all to distance learning, so we've really had to struggle through. However, I would like to commend staff members who have, again, gone above and beyond the call of duty to support my son and to bring him as, to bring him in education as best as they could in the situation. So again, I want to echo the same positive comments, my great thanks, my great support to the staff and the teachers at Ram. You really have impressed me, so thank you.
Thank you. Judy Benson Clark?
I have, I have a public comment, but I'm calling in. So if at some point when you go through those people, could you go back to the people that are calling in as well?
Yes, I will be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. I'm also under public comment, Judy Benson Clark for Marlborough. And I just want to share that the board, I know, listens to and appreciates everyone's input. I happen to also work in a school, and I will say, you know, and I'm not judging this, but we went back last week, and many of us are in quarantine or have COVID right now. And I just share that as it's a fact, and that I don't think that there are easy decisions with any of this. I understand how much is, you know, being balanced, and I'm very appreciative of the community, the parents, you know, the teachers, the kids, and everyone with us. And I think it really is a very, very difficult situation to navigate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to phone callers. I believe someone just spoke up right before Judy.
Hi, yes, this is Liz Gorgione, Roberts Road, Marlborough, Connecticut. I'm clearly not going to win any popularity contest here tonight. I just wanted to say, first and foremost, I've always been a huge supporter of teachers and administration, backed them up every way possible. It's not a job I could do or would want to do, quite honestly. And that being said, you know, the last few months, looking at how we've gone to distance learning at Ram is kind of concerning to me. And again, I know I don't have all the facts, but the concern for me is how I can have one child in an elementary school with over 400 children, and another child at the middle school, and one has been doing full-time every day, and the other one hasn't been for months. And I understand that it's staffing issues and teachers having to quarantine and things like that. But what I'm not understanding as a parent and as a member of the community is what the percentage is, let's say, of teachers that are having to quarantine, and how that's impacting classes without teachers or student-teacher ratios, because the way I'm looking at it, I'm seeing other schools as well that have gone back hybrid. I think Colchester's been hybrid pretty much since day one. My information could be off, but many other schools have. So I'm trying to ascertain what Ram, and I know you can't answer this, but it's something to put out there and to consider, what Ram can do in terms of the balance of keeping kids safe and teachers safe as well, of course, but also making sure that there is some degree of in-person learning. I don't think it's a stretch to say that most students do much better in person, and I'm not even touching the subject of IEPs and 504s. These kids are at a severe, severe loss by not having a teacher in the classroom with them and being able to have that interaction. I have one student that is a 504, and thankfully, she's been in school every day. I have another student that's a straight A student and doesn't need that. And then I have two stepchildren that are really, really struggling with distance learning. It's hard to communicate with the teachers sometimes, there's technology issues. So I think I'm bordering, I'm bordering up to my three minutes here, but I really feel it is a concern. I'm glad we're back, and I hope that there is something that can be done to keep the kids back in this hybrid model. If parents want to choose to keep their kids at home because they feel it's safer, they are more than welcome to, and no judgment. That being said, I really hope that those that feel that everything is perfect also don't sit there and insult people, those that think that things could be done better. I think it's a balance, and I think it needs to be mutual respect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I saw Gina Lee with a hand up. Someone, Gina, Gina Lee had raised a hand. Are you still wanting to speak? Okay, do we, there she is. Mic is not working. Well, we'll go to Kayden Crawford next, and Gina, hopefully you'll get your mic working. Kayden?
Hi, actually, that's my daughter. This is Michelle Crawford, borrowing her laptop tonight. Yeah, so I'm going to piggyback on Liz's sentiments and comments there regarding, of course, the job that the teachers are doing, and that's certainly something I couldn't do myself, but I am not pleased with what's been happening with Ram this year. I understand that there were changes made to the school year and the rationale behind it in the beginning, but it needs to be reevaluated as to when are we going to turn to normal. You know, currently, I haven't seen any communications as to when our children can return in person more than two days a week. And as Liz mentioned, yes, Colchester has been back for a while. East Hampton has also gone for four days a week. I don't see anything from Ram as to even when we're going to reevaluate the current situation. So I understand, you know, the cases, positive cases, they are saying, have increased, but the indication of risk, unfortunately, is the number of hospitalizations and deaths. Sorry to be Debbie Downer, but that's true. And from what I'm seeing, you know, reported statistically, the number of deaths and hospitalizations are extremely low. And with that, there are very few, if any, cases that have been documented as being spread from school. So, you know, with that, you know, according to the CDC and the state of Connecticut, the safest and best place for our children is in school. You know, so with the other children in the surrounding towns going to school, I also agree that it's important for our kids to be in the classroom. I'm watching my normally socially active and straight A student struggle, both academically and mentally. She's not getting the same education remotely than if she was in person, and her grades and mental state are indicative of this. So, and I know, again, you can't answer any questions, but I'd like to know, what is our plan? When can our kids experience the in-person education Ram has promised to our taxpayers?
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? And Gina Lee, did you get your microphone working? Doesn't sound like yet. Okay. Are there any other public comments?
Jeremy, can you hear me? It's Mark Rivera.
Yes, yes, Mark.
I'd like to make a comment if I'm next in line and nobody else is waiting.
Go ahead, Mark.
So I'm Mark Rivera. I'm speaking as a citizen and a parent of a student at Ram. I'm also the School Resource Officer at Ram, and I'm a Board of Selectman. And I've been associated with Ram for 15 years as a police officer. In the last three years, I've walked the halls and had the most unbelievable relationships I could ever imagine with students, teachers, and administrators alike. I can't say anything critical about somebody who's doing the best they can, considering the circumstances, which are critical, and the decisions that need to be made are based on protecting the life and safety of children and the citizenry. So I understand, even with my own kid, I don't want him home 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but I want him to be alive. I want to be alive. I want Scott Leslie to be alive. I want kids to not be sick. So when you air, you have to air on the side of safety. And having been a police officer for 40 years, and 15 in this town, I could tell you, you're not privy to all the cases that are going on. You're not privy to the people that are suffering. You're not privy to the people that are sick. You only hear what you hear on the news, but it isn't all reported, and it's not a perfect system, and we don't know everything. And as much as people try to get the information and try to come up with their own opinions, it's just an opinion. I have complete faith in the administration of Ram High School, Ram Middle School, and the Superintendent to do what's right. They want kids to be educated. They love education. They love the kids, but you have to air on the caution, on the side of caution at times. So I just wanted to get that in there, and as a police officer, my job is safety. My job is to keep these kids safe, whether it be from active shooters, whether it be from anything, from bullying, from COVID. And since that's my primary concern, and my stepson's doing fine, he'd rather be in school. It would be a more ideal situation. But sensitivity to the suffering of others should be our number one guiding principle in keeping our kids alive, and a realization that we can't all get what we want, but the public good is what's important, and making a contribution to what is good for all, not just good for us. That's my statement, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mark. Gina, you raised your hand. I hope your mic is working.
Hi, this is Gina. I had to call in from my phone. My name is Jean Glode, actually, and I live in Hebron, Connecticut. While I agree that we need to work on our safety and keep everyone as safe as we can be, I want to understand how it's not working at Ram and it's working in other places. I know every local town is pretty much doing more than we are education-wise. Besides being in hybrid, we are also in a half-day hybrid model. I'm not understanding what is happening on Wednesday. If there's a Monday off of school, our children should be going to school on Wednesday. I can speak to what's happening in the schools, because I work in a school, and I work with medically fragile children, and I am there, and he is there, the students that I work with are there every day. So I'm not quite understanding how there is an influx of concern at our school, but all these other schools seem to be managing okay. And I do not mean any disrespect to the teachers, or, and I completely support them. And my son has some of the most amazing teachers right now, and I'm extremely disappointed that his interactions with them are through a computer, because it is not the same level of engagement at all. And I also think that the Board of Ed, administration, and all the teachers, I think the teachers recognize it most, need to realize the mental health impact that this is having on our students. This is the, as I stated in my email to the board, this is not students that you're going to hear about. These are students from good families that are struggling. They're struggling with a lack of socialization. They're struggling with a disconnection to learning. And I really think we need to have a better plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other callers? Joe, would you like to speak?
Yes, I first like to say thank you to everybody who's providing input, you know. I don't look at it as negatively or positively. I think it's just, it's great, it's great that we have this kind of community that people are voicing their opinions and their concerns. I have no children anymore in Ram Middle School or the middle of the high school. I have three college children that all attended Ram.
Joe, can I interrupt? Are you speaking as, are you speaking as a citizen?
I'm speaking as a, Joe O'Connor, 75 Smith Farm, speaking as an individual. Thanks, Stephanie. My comment is really this. I have three children now that are all in college, and they're, two of them are home, remote legal learning. My daughter is a senior, who's also done remote learning. So it's not just in the high school. I know I have nephews and nieces that are also in Colchester and in Glastonbury. They're attending school. Every school system is different. I have the complete faith of our administration, our principals, and our staff, that we're making the right decisions. My comment again was, it's not just in high school. This is in the college level as well. So as Mark Rivera mentioned, it's about safety, and I think we have to start looking at what's, you know, every dynamic is different. We're different than Glastonbury. We could have five teachers that test positive, or 20 children that test positive. When you look at the contact tracing, and I'm pretty up to speed on what this disease is doing as far as my industry goes, because everywhere I go, I have to, we have to be, we have to know what's going on. It's very important for people to, you know, take a breath and look at what we're dealing with. And you may not all have the information, but the administration has the, they have the information. And again, I sympathize with everybody. Everybody wants to be in school. Our administrators want our kids to be in school. Our teachers want our kids to be in school. I just think that we all need to take a breath again and just listen to what really is why we're in this situation. It's, it is kind of unique, but we're in this situation for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other callers? Or any other public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing any. We're going to move on to number four on the agenda, review and discussion of the district's planning for in-school and remote learning during the PANDAC. Scott?
Great, well, thank you, Stephanie, and thank you to, you know, everybody that spoke in public comment. I want to stress that it's critical for us to get feedback on all sides of the spectrum on this, because we can't really move forward unless we know what everyone's experiencing, our students, our teachers, our parents, our families. And I certainly want to, before I start presenting anything, thank first and foremost our teachers for the amazing job they're doing. But I also want to thank our students, our parents, Board of Ed members, who I've seen firsthand how hard everybody is working to try and make this work as well as we can for our students. So I want to express my gratitude for all the hard work that everyone's doing, but also, you know, want to stress the fact that we really are open to hearing all sides of an issue, and we want to hear from all of our parents, whether they are pleased with what's happening, or if not, and why they're not, and what we can do to help address those issues. So I'm going to turn my screen to present, and I'm going to work through a presentation. And then I've got, there are some questions that some board members had asked within the last week, and I'll address those, and then certainly open it up to any additional questions. So this is really focusing on how we've moved forward, why we've made some of the decisions we've made, what are some of the challenges that we, we've discovered, and certainly some of the challenges that have been expressed during public comment, and some of our initiatives moving forward to address some of those. So just to kind of give a, bring us back to history. March 13th, a day I will always remember, is the last, was our last full in-person day in school last year, when we left for the day on the 13th, and were told that we would likely be out for a period of time. I can remember distinctly thinking that we might be out for two weeks or so. Never imagined, obviously, that we would be out this long. So we began and transitioned to fully remote learning on Friday, March 20th. That's, that was as a result of the state, unfortunately, well, needing to shut schools down at the end of last year. Going into this school year, as most of you know, we opened with our hybrid model. And if you look at schools across the state, and I have some data, but if you look at schools across the state, the vast majority of secondary schools, middle and high schools, have adopted a hybrid model which allows us to maintain appropriate physical distance between students and ensure that we don't have too big of class sizes, that we don't have too many students in, you know, it's not just the classrooms, but our cafeteria, you know, we may have as many as 300 to 400 students eating lunch at one time, that we don't have large amounts of students in relatively tight spaces. So the hybrid model, which essentially brings in half of your students for typically Monday and Tuesday, the other half of the students on Thursday and Friday, the vast majority of the hybrid models have everybody fully distant on Wednesday, which allows for the teachers to have all of their students in class at the same time, utilizing the same model. So our hybrid model as well, we made some significant changes to our schedule in that rather than sticking with eight single periods each day, we adopted a block schedule, which provides teachers with additional time for each of their classes. And we did shorten the day by about an hour, which allows for teacher conferencing, and hopefully, and well, opens up an opportunity for teachers to both work with students and provide extra support for the students, but just as importantly, for teachers to collaborate and essentially figure out how best to teach in a very, very, very in a very, very, very different, um, type of teaching model than, than any of us have, have really been trained in. So, um, and, and now that we've, um, kind of moved through developing and, and understanding the model that we're using, um, we're using that time to address some of the other issues in terms of providing supports to students, um, both emotional and academic. In terms of, um, those times that we've had to transition to remote learning, there's, there's basically two reasons why schools across the state have made a transition, um, to remote learning. One is through contact tracing. So when we see any student or staff member who has tested positive for COVID, we're obligated to do contact tracing, which allows us to identify each and every person that that individual has come in contact with. We have typically done that in concert with our local Department of Health. We're currently working with the Chatham Department of Health. And nine times out of 10, it will be the, um, recommendation of the Chatham Department of Health to move to a remote learning. And typically as a result of contact tracing, that has not been for a long period of time. So, um, you'll see in a few minutes that that typically results in maybe a day or so when, um, we would be in remote learning. And the purpose for that is that as we do the contact tracing, we need to, we need to determine whether there has in fact been any transmission in the school and the extent of any contacts that a positive individual had because each and every one of those individuals who that person has had close personal contact with needs to quarantine as well. So it, it involves quite a bit of detective work, involves quite a bit of, um, communication with both students, parents and staff members. Oftentimes, we may learn of a, um, a positive case late in the afternoon, which hinders our opportunity to have access to all the folks we need to, um, work with. That would be a case in which we would likely be told you need to be in a remote learning situation for the next day so that you could complete the contact tracing. Um, it's not out of the question. It's certainly not the norm. It's not out of the question where one student, one who tests positive could impact as many as 30 or so students in terms of resulting in quarantining. Uh, we have had some cases, well, one case where we had to quarantine an entire athletic team. The other issue that is plaguing schools and, um, you know, I know that Ram has been, been hit hard by this, but I can tell you that, um, this, we're not the exception. This is, this is happening across the state where schools are, um, challenged due to the fact that, um, a sufficient number of staff are needing to quarantine, whether it be through exposure at school or exposure, um, outside of school, um, whether it be for other medical reasons, um, that they may not, you know, they, they may need to be out of school for a period of time. And what we are constantly doing is reviewing our staffing levels and making sure that we have an adequate number of staff in the building to ensure everybody's safety. And, and during COVID, that means something different than it does during our normal school year. So for example, if we have a, um, situation where there's maybe a heightened amount of illness within the community outside of the pandemic, we may have a fairly large number of staff members out. But we have during normal times, the opportunity to, um, put students into either the cafeteria or to the media center and so that we can move fairly large numbers of students into some of our larger spaces so that we can adequately supervise them and make sure that, um, their learning needs are attended to. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, we're really, um, limited significantly in terms of how many students we can place into the cafeteria or how many students we can place into the media center. Um, so that, that already brings, uh, that brings a challenge to us. So the staffing levels aren't, you know, because of, of irresponsible behavior amongst our staff, unfortunately. It's because, um, like the rest of the world, our staff are, are just as susceptible to COVID as anyone. And there are schools across the state, um, who are, you know, shutting down. I know a number of schools did go back into class this past week. And, and I, I know I talked to a number of superintendents this morning that had to shut down as well because of either staffing levels or, um, through contact tracing. So, um, it's really not something that, that only Ram is addressing. Unfortunately, it's a challenge, um, across the state. In terms of the, um, just looking at the dates that we, um, have needed to close, we did have a day in October and, and November that we closed due to contact tracing. And then, um, November 16th, the high school had a staffing issue. And then unfortunately, on the 19th of November, um, the middle school had a spike in the number of teachers that needed to quarantine. So, um, that's why we were in remote, um, during those times. Now, just to give you kind of a overview of what's happening elsewhere in the, in the state. I, I picked two weeks and unfortunately, um, just because the, the data collection is, um, it just takes a while for the state to collect it all. The most recent week that we have for, um, the data collection is the week of December 14th through the 18th. And during that week, 41% of districts were fully in-person. 33.5 were fully remote, about 25 were hybrid. Now, if we just look at that week of December 14th to the 18th, that doesn't really tell the whole story because, you know, Ram is unique in being a regionalized secondary district without an elementary, without any elementary components to our schools. And what most districts are experiencing is, um, fully in for their elementary and some type of hybrid model for their secondary remote. So some of those numbers may be a little skewed, um, as a result of that. I chose the, the week of November 30th through December 4th to highlight as well only because this was a, a week following obviously Thanksgiving. Um, and you can see how the numbers, um, reflected some of the changes as a result of, um, any spike in Thanksgiving. So you saw kind of the numbers flip-flop a little bit. So you had the number of districts going fully in-person down to 37%, whereas the number being fully remote, um, jumped up to 43.7%. Um, some of those schools planned on being fully remote, um, in preparation or anticipation of a spike, whereas others were responding to, um, either a spike or staffing challenges that they might, um, have encountered. In terms of the, um, what is it looking like at Ram specifically for the number of cases that we're seeing? So in terms of the number of students who have been in our building and have been, um, diagnosed as having a positive COVID case, we have 14, 41 students rather, um, who have tested positive for COVID. And we have six staff members that tested positive for COVID. You can see that the numbers are quite different when you look at the numbers and, and students that are quarantined due to, um, being in contact with somebody. And what the, the CDC guidelines, um, what we follow for those is that we're looking for close contact, which essentially means that within a, um, within a period of a day, you've been within six feet for up to 15 minutes of an individual. They don't have to be 15 consecutive minutes. Um, you might have passed the individual and spent 30 seconds to a minute with them 15 times. So, um, but the key, the key characteristic here is that you've been in, within six feet for up to 15 minutes. And we've had up to this point, 343 students that have had to quarantine and 70 staff that have had to quarantine. They're not necessarily 343 unique students in that some students have had to quarantine, uh, multiple times. Um, so, but those give you a sense of, um, the numbers we have compared to the numbers, um, who actually may have tested positive for COVID. Um, in terms of the students that, um, are choosing to be remote. So this has nothing to do with being quarantined. At the middle school, um, we have 79 families who are choosing to have their, their child work remote. At the high school, we have 128. Um, we have had a, a, a temporary increase. So we have a number of families, 41 at the high school and six at the middle school that are choosing to keep their children home for a period of a couple of weeks. Um, just until we get past, I think what they were concerned would be a, um, a post-New Year's spike. I think one of the, um, pieces that made Ram a little different from a number of districts is that, um, you may remember that prior to the winter break, the holiday break, um, there were a number of districts that were announcing that their plan was to close either through that first week following New Year's or through, um, January 19th. And I think it was more common that districts were choosing to close through January 19th. And the, the idea was that they were hoping, hopeful that by closing for either that week or that, uh, two weeks, they would avoid the, any spike due to, um, holiday gatherings. And we specifically chose not to do that. Um, we really wanted to give our students and our staff the opportunity to be in school as long as it's safe. So rather than predicting what may or may not happen, you know, we made the conscious decision to really look at what is, what is happening in the community, what is happening within our, um, schools themselves to make those decisions. And so throughout the, the, this last holiday, our, our administrative team, which included administrators from each of the buildings, um, district administrators, we, we met frequently throughout the break to, to ask the question, what are we seeing? Um, we were getting reports, um, our families, um, were really great about contacting our nurses, um, even though we were out of school to let us know what the, um, positivity rate was. And during the break, we had on average about two students a day that were being told were positive. But again, not being in school, we were fortunate that we didn't have to do contact tracing. So that really didn't, um, necessarily impact any decision we made. And by the time we, um, had met through the week, things looked good. We had met as, um, Saturday, January 2nd and we were still, um, on target to open up um, for in-person learning on that Monday. And unfortunately, um, this is an, an example of I think how quickly things can move. We had a, uh, enough staff members who, um, notified us that they needed to quarantine, that we, we realized we didn't have enough staff to safely open. So, um, that was unfortunately a decision that was made within a day. So, you know, I think some people ask, why, why didn't we know until Sunday that we, um, needed to close? When actually, you know, we were really looking at it on a day, day by day basis and we're hopeful as recently as that Saturday that we would open. But, um, things took a turn for us and so, um, hence that decision there. Um, certainly, as I think this evening reflected, um, we received feedback from parents on, um, and I think these, this is pretty indicative of the types of, of things we, we heard. You know, we have a number of parents that were concerned with, with a large number of holiday gathering involving our students. And we hear about that, um, even outside of the holidays. Families and parents concerned about, um, gatherings of students or community members. We were, we, we received concerns about community members who maybe have traveled and who chose not to quarantine. Um, that probably more unique to the holidays. It's not something we tend to hear, um, typically. On the other hand, we also certainly heard from parents who, um, whose students were experiencing difficulty engaging um, in total online learning, um, students performing poorly in, in classes resulting in diminished learning and poor grades. And, um, we know that that is a significant issue. If this is, this is, it's not a Ram issue. It is, this is an issue that as educators and as parents and as students, we are all facing. Um, and again, I want to stress, it's so critical for us to get that feedback so we know, um, firsthand the type of challenges that our students and families are facing. Obviously, our goal is to be in school. And, um, we are also pleased that we're able to return to school yesterday. Um, and certainly, um, our goal is to remain in school as long as it's, it's safe to do so. Um, we know that the, the stress of living through a pandemic is taking a toll on our students. We know that being in a hybrid model takes a toll and we know that being remote takes a toll. Again, I, I would, um, go back and thank our teachers and our families for doing such a remarkable job of supporting our students. But I think even having said that, we know that, um, our students are being challenged in ways that they, they have never been challenged before and it's certainly taking a toll. And we are seeing academic issues, students who are failing one or more courses. We are certainly seeing students who are disengaged and having a great deal of difficulty re-engaging with us. We have students and, and families asking to take, retake courses, hands-on courses in particular, that they don't feel like they're getting the full experience with. Um, and we know that, um, our students and, um, as well as, you know, many of us throughout the communities are struggling with emotional health issues. So as we, you know, please know that, that our, our first goal is to be in school as, as much and as often as we can. I mean, obviously, we know that our students will benefit, um, from being physically in school. That, I think goes, hopefully goes without saying. But we also know that it's not enough simply to want to be back in school and it's not enough to be back in school under the current conditions that we're all experiencing. We really need to make sure that we go above and beyond and address the issues. So in terms of some of the things that, um, we're either currently putting into place or looking forward to put into place, um, we have engaged our students in advisory groups to get feedback, um, on their experiences and to, um, so that they can give us some, some ideas in terms of what we may be able to do to enhance our experience. Um, we have a virtual wall of kindness that was created by our students and staff to try to promote connections amongst students in this very new and, and, and difficult situation. Both schools are inviting students and parents to virtual meetings to look at different ways that we can support their students academically, socially and emotionally. Each school and the district is, is really trying to make sure that we're providing constant communication, um, to keep everybody informed about what it is that we're doing and why we're doing it. We're sending weekly communications. Um, we also have our, our school newsletters to really try to get out there and, and make sure people understand or get the information that's, that's critical. In terms of looking at, um, supporting our students, our support staff and teachers meeting regularly in teams to develop interventions to provide academic and emotional support to specific students. Our counselors are scheduling virtual meetings with parents and students, um, for those students that are struggling. Our school resource officer is conducting home visits for students that are chronically disengaged. Um, our counselors are doing well, regular wellness checks. Um, we are, we have, we've always had a very strong hand-in-love relationship with A H M. And we've been meeting and actively discussing with A H M, how do we engage students in, um, helping to promote emotional health when the last thing that a student wants to do is join another Google Meet or Zoom video? And so A H M is working with us to create short videos. And so A H M is working with us to create short videos on topics and helping to to get some things other than the typical school type of thing out to students. So we're, we're, we're looking for different ways to communicate with our students as well at this time. In terms of looking at specific, some of the specific academic supports that we put in place, our high need students with I E Ps have had the opportunity to attend school four days a week. So we have been bringing them in, not just the two days that they would be in in the hybrid model, but we've been bringing them in for four days. The middle school reached out to forty students who are particularly struggling with engagement and showing some issues with grades. And we've invited them also to attend four days a week. Those students began that this Monday, and on Thursday, the high school has invited a number of students, thirty five students, to attend four days a week as well. So we're, we're looking to balance the number of students that we can safely have in classrooms. So some of those students may not necessarily be joining a classroom, but they'll be joining an adult somewhere in the building where they'll be able to get some support. The middle school is looking at, has assigned paraprofessionals to support students. And I think probably one of the the most important things that we're, we're really starting to look at is how can we develop strategies to implement support for those students who are struggling most significantly? Students that have multiple Fs, those students who may not want to come into the building four days a week. And, you know, some of you may remember, I'm sure all of you remember, last year, we changed the grading for everybody, and we created the pass fail option. And, you know, we found that although I think in for a a quick fix and for the fact that we were looking at a relatively short time in the spring, that served its purpose. I think we all agree that 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 isn't the appropriate way to go at this point in time. But instead, we really need to look at each of these students individually and put something in place to to support them. I I will say that we are starting to see some success. And even though some of these plans, we're just putting them in place, or there are some still in the planning phase, we have started to see a decrease in the number of students that are either having Fs or some low grades. So we're, we're, we're actually pretty, pretty pleased to see some success already there. In terms of our long-term planning, we know that there will still be those students who are going to need support beyond the school year. Last year, we did a online summer school program. This year, we recognize that we really need in-person support for our students. So we're looking to put in an in-person summer school program in place for some of our students. We still will be using some online programs for credit recovery and additional credit options so that students will still have those options available. We're looking to continue individualized learning strategies to support students throughout next year. So not just get them through this year, but also some of those things will move into next year. And as I think I mentioned earlier, we had some requests for students to have opportunities to retake some of the hands-on courses that they may be taking now, but not really being able to fully experience those. I need to give a shout out to the art department. If any of you are students in art with our classes or parents with students in our classes, you've likely seen the the bags of supplies that are going home with our art students and so that they've been able to do much more at home than they would normally. Unfortunately, not all of our hands-on classes can do that. Metals, for examples, would be hard pressed to have students doing any welding or anything like that at home. So certainly, there may be students who would like to take another shot at some of those classes. We had some questions over the last week, and so I've got two slides of questions. So I'll, I'll go through those questions and then then I'll certainly open up for for any additional questions. What is RAM doing to consolidate classes in gym, library, and the cafeteria when teachers call out? We do regularly combine classes, particularly in the media center, since the room provides us with separate spaces where we can put three or four classes separate from each other. So even though we might have a higher number of students, we can still keep them separate. And we don't need an adult for each one of those. So we may have four classes that are, the teacher is is at home, teaching from home. So the students are still engaged in the class, but we're able to put multiple classes in one area. The cafeteria provides us with some opportunities to do that. If you walked into the cafeteria today, you would see a very different looking cafeteria. Gone are the lunch tables, and instead, we have just rectangular tables that we can spread students out in. But even having said that, we are still fairly limited with the need to ensure adequate distancing between between each of those students. Are paraprofessionals being assigned to cover? Most of our paraprofessionals are assigned to specific students or classes, but we are using those paraprofessionals that are available to cover classes when they are available. I'm sure some of you have heard of the dearth of substitute teachers. That certainly has been a a crisis across the state. The number of subs at the beginning of the year for us was, or typically, we might have as many as thirty subs. We were down to three to five subs. We have made some headway in bringing additional subs in. Chris Mater, in particular, has been doing a great job of interviewing and and hiring and bringing on subs. Carrie Anne at the middle school has been doing likewise. And so we have been able to add some subs, but we are, we are definitely not close to where we typically are in terms of having the number of subs. So we do take advantage of of other adults that we may be able to shift to cover classes. Our teachers being told to cover classes during their planning periods. As much as as we can, teachers are covering some classes. Obviously, we need to be respectful and make sure that teachers have adequate, you know, that they're available to teach their own classes and that they have preparation periods each day. But when when we can, we certainly, teachers are helping out in that area as well. Teachers expected to teach the classes via Zoom went out for quarantine? Great question. They do continue to teach remotely from quarantine. If if we, when we had, when, and if if, remember back to the slide where we had up to seventy teachers who have been quarantined over this year, if we instead told those teachers, you're in quarantine, you're out of school, we need to get a substitute for you, one, it's unlikely that we'd be able to find a sub. Two, it's unlikely that we'd be able to find a sub that would have the expertise to be able to teach that subject. So teachers are, when when able, they are still teaching remotely, which has been a a real boon for us and 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 for our students to have the teacher with the expertise, working with them as opposed to somebody who may not have that expertise. Does the board need to consider granting increasing pay for substitutes? I don't think so. At this point, the district is currently paying a hundred dollars a day for our subs, which is competitive within the region. That's, that's pretty much what everyone is paying. So I don't think that would make a difference at this point. We're, we don't see a shortage of subs because of pay at this point. We, we see a shortage of subs just because of either, I think, I think the number of people who are willing and comfortable doing that sort of work. And probably, well, the, one of the most important, certainly the most important question right now, when the staff does receive the vaccine, how will this change what RAM is doing? And first of all, let me just give a little background on the vaccine. We know that we are currently vaccinating those individuals in one A, first responders and our frontline medical workers, teachers. And when I say teachers, because that's what the state term, the state is using, it refers to anyone that works closely with students in a school district. So it covers everyone from teachers to paraprofessionals, to bus drivers, to coaches, to, you know, anyone who works with students. We are all in one B, which is the next group that will be vaccinated. We are told that beginning on Thursday, those individuals aged seventy five and older will begin, contact will begin for those individuals, and they hope to start vaccinations for individuals in that age group beginning on Monday. It's hope, we're hopeful that teachers, educators will be able, be able to upload our list of educators as early as next week and that educators will begin to, will be able to start the process of scheduling vaccines. So that will likely begin to happen next week, although I had two meetings with the Department of Health today. They anticipate that this is, this is not going to be a quick process. They anticipate that it'll, it'll probably take a couple of months at least to get this group through the first vaccines. Chatham Health is still working on what vaccinations will look like for this group, whether we're going to offer vaccinations at a school setting for all of the educators in either a district or in an area, or whether it'll simply be asking folks who are cleared for vaccines to make an appointment. So although it it is happening, and fortunately, I I think we can say that the first educators will likely begin to have appointments next week, it it will take probably a couple of months before everyone is vaccinated. So what will that mean for RAM? Well, we were hopeful, quite frankly, that once you're vaccinated, you, that would reduce any need for quarantining, since hopefully you're protected. Unfortunately, right now, that is not the case. As, you know, typically, a vaccine will go through all of the phases of testing before it's approved, in which case you can be certain that the person doesn't pose a risk to anybody for that particular disease that they're vaccinated from. Right now, with COVID, although they completed phase three, which confirms that it's safe, phase four, where you determine whether an individual who's vaccinated can still get COVID and still transmit COVID, even though they won't themselves get sick from it, has not been determined. So we're being told by our health departments that if any of us, even after being vaccinated, at least for the time being, are exposed, we would still need to quarantine. It's unlikely that our students will start to be vaccinated until late spring or possibly the summer. So I I do anticipate that we will continue to be wearing masks and distancing, at least, you know, for the foreseeable future. The good news is, is that the vac, the vaccine will will protect educators and all of our our school employees from actually getting COVID. The one piece we don't know yet is, does it prevent us from passing it on to somebody else? And so I would say for the time being, it it probably won't have a significant impact on the way things look like. However, having said that, once they've had a chance to look at the data, if they can determine that those of us who are vaccinated do not pose a threat at transmission, that will, that will be a game changer. Because at that point, we would not need to quarantine individuals, and I I think that would have a a significant change. So I am going to, that was my last slide. And Stephanie, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I'd be happy to open it up to any questions from the board.
Thank you, Scott. Do any, does anybody have any questions?
I think Finn Colonna has a question.
Hi, Finn.
Yes, Scott, just to, just to follow up and and I think I'm getting some feedback from the parents both before and and during the meeting. On the, you know, is there a timeline or is there a possibility that we'll see full-time instruction again? And also, is there, you know, it's my understanding that the the social distancing is what's, you know, causing the issue, what's causing the problem secondary to the staffing issues. But if if there were no staffing issues, I'm under the impression we wouldn't be able to go back anyway because of the six-foot social distancing. So I guess my question or their their questions are regarding, what are the other districts? How are the other districts getting to go back? You know, following these guidelines or is, are they really, are they just doing it and not getting checked? Or are they able to socially distance all their students while we're not able to do that?
So I think that's, those are excellent questions, Ben. And I think that one of the challenge, well, certainly one of the challenges that we have is our size. And so there are smaller schools that have fewer students. They have smaller class size anyway, so they may not necessarily need to be moving into a hybrid model in order to, you know, maintain safe distance and 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 keep students apart. You know, I I would say that from at least at the secondary level, you know, most of them, most secondary schools continue to function in in a hybrid, in a hybrid model. When, when would we be able to move out of the hybrid model? You know, I, I, I don't know if I can really answer that right now, Vinnie. You know, we, in my meeting with the Department of Health earlier this afternoon, we talked about athletics, you know. So right now, athletics are are set to resume on the nineteenth. And the Department of Health was concerned, why are we doing that when the COVID rates are not, are not decreasing? If anything, they're getting worse. And I I think it's a tribute to, you know, all of the schools that we've been able to manage things like athletics pretty well, and we've, you know, kept small numbers and we've been able to to make that happen. I I I'd be hesitant to say, I think we're going to be able to get everyone back full-time, early spring, late spring. I think it all depends upon what the numbers of this of of COVID goes. You know, one of the discussions this morning with the State Department of Health was the, you know, the the UK variant that's, that's starting to come into the state. You know, where does that go? Is that, maybe it's a whole lot of nothing and we don't see it. And that'd be fantastic. That would be a good sign. If if that becomes the dominant strain within the state, then they're concerned that, you know, now you've got a a strain where it's much easier to contract, and it tends to be more common amongst young people. So, you know, there, there's another challenge that schools have. So I'd love to be able to say, I think we'll be back, you know, early spring. I think we'll be able to to get back together. I I just don't think I can make that prediction at this point. I, I, I haven't seen yet in any, in our meetings, and we meet once a week with the local Department of Health and the State Department of Health. Nobody at this point is saying it, it, you know, let down your guard. You guys can can move back together. They're pretty much telling us stay the course and.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to address a procedural thing here. I see some comments coming in from the public, and we certainly, we certainly welcome your comments. Comments have to be done verbally during the public comment section, and we certainly want to hear from you. There will be another one after the discussion with the board. If you have any questions, I, I encourage you to to contact your administration and and, you know, have some discussions. But as a public comment, we are not allowed as a board to to answer or or to. or to have conversation with you about your questions, unfortunately, because of the format of the the meeting. So if you have public comments, save them for the comments question section after our discussion. Thank you. Sue, did you have a question?
Yes, I have some questions. My first question is around, I'm a data person, so I'd like to see more hard data being provided to the board. When you're comparing, I can't remember what slide it was. But when when you show the percentages, I'm not quite sure that's really apples to apples. Would be great to see the actual data compared to our district to other districts like ours. So that's one point. I'd love to understand about students that are normally A and B students and are not doing well and not even coming close to passing or, you know, having Cs, Ds, or Fs. And what we're doing around that, are the counselors proactively reaching out, working with the parents and the students, have a written plan for them? I think you mentioned on one slide, Scott, that the counselors are reaching out. And I could have misread that, but, you know, I have kids in the middle school and high school, and the counselors are not reaching out. I do believe my children know if they need the counselors, they could reach out. But the counselors are not proactively reaching out to the kids. What are we doing to engage students that have disengaged from classes and learning? I know that there are some kids that have not even signed in for the entire year. What we're doing and how and are we succeeding at what we're doing? So say there's so many kids, fifty kids that have not checked in. Are we doing this? And now forty kids are the only ones not checked in, so we're seeing success. Those are some of the data points that I would like to see. AHM around the AHM and the partnering. Yes, AHM is doing a great job on social media, putting those videos out. And but are they, are they being, are they engaging with the students as well and working with students and have plans and working with parents and students on the kids that are having a tough time? I'm curious to know that as well. And last but not least, you know, I, these are just my suggestions. Is there any thought on the children that are not having a pleasant time learning from home? Is there any way that we could get them back into school, you know, more days than not? And the children that are doing well, distance learning, you know, they are, they remain distance learning. And then we think about considering bringing the children that need that hands on and need to be back in school, back in school. And how we work that, I don't know. I don't have all the answers, but that's just another suggestion of mine.
Great.
That's those are my points. Thank you, Scott and Stephanie.
We'll certainly get that information.
Dana?
Yeah, similar to, is my audio working?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can't, the lines over my bar aren't working. Similar to what Sue said, I wanted to ask, how are we, how are the counselors selecting which students to reach out to and perform these wellness checks on?
You know, Dana, I think it's it's both a combination of feedback that they may be getting from teachers, from other students, from parents. Certainly looking at the grades. So those students that have shown, you know, the most significant decreases in grades or that are clearly, you know, not engaging within their classes. So they're relying on their looking at student data in particular, grades, engagement with classes, and then the feedback that they're getting from teachers, members of the community, that sort of thing.
Okay, I know there's, I think it would be important to look into students who haven't shown any sort of academic, any students who haven't been academically deteriorating. I know plenty of students who have been struggling mentally during all of this, whose grades are still As and Bs. And part of that is because every single test I have personally taken has been open notes. And I have had access to the internet the entire time. So it's kind of hard for, in some classes, to have a bad grade because we're given so many resources that it's not really learning. It's more so just reciting what the internet tells us during a test. So I think it would definitely be beneficial for these check-ins to be performed, not only with students who are having bad grades at the moment, but with other students, regardless of what teachers are saying, because there's a lot that's going on that I think is very hard to pick up on, especially when we were fully virtual and just over Zoom.
Great.
Kathleen?
First of all, I'd like to thank Dana for being so mature and vocal on behalf of students. And I have two students at home and she has said so much that resonates with me personally. I want to thank Scott and the administration as well, because I know this is hard. Of course, you want your students to be in the building. That's why you became educators. That's your bailiwick. That's where you thrive is with kids in front of you. I work in a place where we had a full fledged plan to return in December with, you know, gradual increase of students in the building. And that is not happening and we are, we are full virtual until January twenty first. I want to thank Scott and the administration for looking at this on a day by day, week by week basis. We did not, Ram did not plan, like other schools, to wait until January. They were anticipating returning right after the winter break. And you should be commended for that. I totally empathize and understand where our parents who are unhappy are coming from. This is hard. I'm a special educator, so for those students who are struggling and have IEPs and 504s, I can imagine being at home and watching your child, your baby, not get what they need and, and, you know, struggle is extremely hard. I commend those parents also who are at home, challenged with the difficult task of trying to ensure that their child gets educated in some way. So not to dismiss in any way how hard it is at home. I think the struggle here is we're in a pandemic and it is really hard to stay focused on a plan when a lot of the things are out of our control. I've seen a lot of from parents and heard from parents regarding students who are headed to college or in their junior year. And, you know, what are we going to do about those kids? I remember at a board meeting, my notes say back in October about eliminating mid years and finals. I hope that is still the case. I hope that we are not giving students large exams even or tests and not maybe not calling them finals. But again, if they're cumulative in any way, I hope that is not going to happen. I know we've talked quite a bit about, even in the hybrid model with students who are attending, the rigor in instruction is compromised. The continuity of instruction is impacted. And it is of no fault of the teachers who are spending hours of time trying to plan at home. This is, this is hard. This is very hard. And we talk about teachers giving up their duty periods to support in the building. Thank you to those teachers who are so flexible and so supportive to ensure that the building is still running and that students are still safe. Because I imagine that's more homework for them and more time away from their own family and their own concerns to try to get that work done so that the kids that they will see the next day have resources in front of them. I could go on for a really long time because I live this as well. I want, you know, the community to know that we recognize their concern, that we know that this is hard and we will make every effort to support the Ram administration, Mr. Leslie, the teachers in trying to figure this out. And, you know, it's not taken lightly in any, in any way. I think too, I'm also, I'm in the know as an educator and as a board member. And that's a little bit different for parents that are out there and don't know what we're doing. All the questions that are being asked are good questions. They're valid questions because they don't know that the teacher evaluation system is based on social emotional learning. And that's what teachers are focusing on, trying really hard to connect with kids in so many ways, to engage with kids. I don't know that everybody knows that, that academics are not, not that they're not important there, but they're like third on the list, you know, safety and health is first, social emotional, and then academics and how to support kids. It's not that teachers have given up on educating their students in front of them or virtually. It's that they're really trying hard to support those kids. We hear all of the concerns about mental health and social emotional learning. And I know that every teacher who has a student who they can't put their hand on wishes that they could rub that child's back and say it's going to be okay. But they can't do it right now. It is very hard. I appreciate all the questions. I think Sue hit on some data points that might help. And please reach out and continue to let us know how we can help. And I, again, I want to thank the teachers and administration for him for trying as best they can.
Thank you, Kathleen. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Joe?
Yeah, great, great points on all aspects. Scott, have we looked at, you know, just thinking outside the box more and more? I know there's a lot of brainstorming going on, but have we looked at going, you know, because I'm not in the know, as Kathleen says, but, you know, everybody's industry is different. But how are we comparing to other schools? I mean, like, you know, my wife is a school teacher. I know what she's doing. I know their school is remote. It's an elementary level school, though. But high schools, are we looking at, can we get back to it to a a structure or a schedule that that we can, like we did before, three day or two day? Or how can we get back into the building? Or am I missing something in the equation as far as the, you know, everybody's just testing positive and the contact tracing is still, is still our big cog in the wheel? Is there something that we we can do that have you guys maybe reached out to other school districts to see how we can get our kids back in the classroom? Maybe I stepped away for a few minutes, so I don't know if that question was asked. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, we're back in the building now. But in, so in terms of, you know, connecting with other schools, that is something we do on a regular basis. I know Dr. Briscoe has a number of principal organizations, as does Dr. Srusy, that they regularly meet with area principals and from a range of areas within the state so that they can in fact compare and see what are other schools doing. So we're not working in a vacuum. You know, we are, I would say, at least on a daily basis, making connection with one administrator from another school. But in, in at least a multiple times a month, working and meeting with multiple principals from other schools. I myself, every week, am meeting with a large group of superintendents, again, from different parts of the state, so that we are, each one of us, very connected to other school districts, other administrators, so that we're all working. And, you know, they're, they're taking advice from Ram and things that we've been successful with. We're certainly listening hard to what the other districts are having. But Joe, we were able to get back in. So right now we are back in school. So our students are back in with the hybrid model.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, sure, I'll go, Stephanie.
Hi, Rob.
Hey, how are you? Scott, is there any thought to extending the day to try and get more out of the day while the kids are already there?
Extending the period of classes, you mean, Rob?
Right, well, I believe my daughter's done it like one oh five. Is there any thought to maybe trying to get an extra period and run to, you know, our usual regularly scheduled time of somewhere around two twenty five ish?
You know, Rob, we haven't had that discussion. Again, mostly because that, that hour that we freed up has been used so consistently by teachers, again, to connect with kids and to connect and collaborate with each other. But that's certainly something we'll put on the agenda and take a look at.
And also, what about utilizing Wednesday? Like, I know East Hartford, they clean at night, so they don't have to do the cleaning during Wednesday. Is there any thought to trying to get, you know, kids in three days a week, one week, two days next week, got on kind of rotation?
We have had discussions about what Wednesday could look like. So that is, that is something that's on the table.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of makes sense, you know, maybe make up for a little bit of the lost time in the last two months. Thank you.
Dana?
Yeah, I just thought of something else. Someone brought it up earlier, but when we miss like a Monday or a Friday, have there been any discussions about making that Wednesday in person for the students who missed that day? Or is that not plausible because Wednesday is like the day where they're cleaning the building and everything?
It's not, it's really not necessarily a cleaning issue. It would be, we have looked at, so we have had a number of conversations specifically about that issue. When you lose a Monday, you know, should we, you know, should we even make Tuesday a Monday? And, you know, Wednesday a Tuesday, that kind of thing. And, you know, we've hesitated doing that only because I think a lot of the staff feel they've planned and they've kind of, they have workarounds already. And the thinking was it may be actually more disruptive than not. We haven't thought about putting, you know, Wednesday in as a makeup day. I think it would be tough to use makeup Wednesday just as a makeup day occasionally. I think that could be pretty disruptive. I think, you know, maybe, maybe we look at Wednesday as a whole in terms of what that means. You know, I know up to this point, you know, Wednesday has really been used to be able to get everybody in class on the same page, even though it's remote, but nonetheless, have everyone together. So, yeah, that's certainly something we can look at.
Okay, I was just bringing that up because I know for me personally, I have four classes Monday and only two on Tuesday. So like for next week, I'm in the building for two periods. I leave early, I go in late and leave early. So there's some students who definitely, when those kind of things happen, don't get as much in person class time. So if it's something that could be a possibility, I'd say, maybe we should consider looking into it. But I also can definitely see how that could be very disruptive to the schedule. We've kind of started to figure out.
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yeah, hi, thanks, Steph. Scott, I was, I was really happy to see that you're looking at the summer to be doing some in person classes. And I'm just wondering if you've had some thought as to next year, since, you know, COVID is obviously going to have some, some long term effects within education. So have you started to look a little bit at next year also for some of the supports that could be put in once the students are back in school?
Absolutely. You know, and we're really looking at as a continuum, Jessica, you know, from this year. Where, you know, we're really looking at what can we do right now? So that we don't have students or, you know, a significant number of students who, because of doing so poorly this year, have to repeat classes or have to do something, you know, next year. But we're also looking at next year, recognizing that it's, even, even though I anticipate that we'll be all back in and next year will be, I think, most likely, a pretty normal looking year, other than the fact that we'll probably still be wearing masks and there'll be some of those mitigation things in place. You know, I think most of us are hopeful that we'll be back at least full time in the building. But we fully recognize that that doesn't, just because we're all back in the building together, doesn't make it a normal year. We will still have students who We will still have students who will be deficient in some skills. We still will have some, you know, teachers that will need to, you know, kind of rethink how they're moving their classes forward. So, yeah, we are thinking very seriously about what next year will bring us and how we will need to continue intervention strategies for our students moving forward. You know, this, 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 the pandemic hopefully will, 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 will come to an end. We know it will. But for education, it, when the pandemic ends, our responsibility and the necessity for us to continue to provide supports to the students will not end. I mean, that is something that I anticipate we will be talking about and we will be addressing, you know, for the next multiple years ahead of us. So yes, absolutely. We're looking at strategies and some of the things that we need to put into place for next year.
Lori?
Thank you, Stephanie. Hi, everybody. I do have a question, but before I get to it, I do just want to make a couple of comments. Just for the record, I, I do want to get out there that I'd like to thank all of the, the teachers in the administration for the hard work. It's surely exhausting and quite unsettling with as frequent changes that are occurring. And while learning from home is certainly not idealistic for, for many of our students, I do see the teachers making tremendous effort to keep, at least from my perspective, students engaged and challenged as best as they can be and as, as best as learning can continue under these, these unbelievable circumstances. It's all unsettling and, and we're all questioning every step of the way. And I do have full confidence that our administration is not only keeping up to date, but, but objectively making the decisions that they are with the safety of our students in mind at all times. I do want to make a quick comment about, I, I love the idea of being creative and finding new ways to solve problems. I caution Scott, as you think about different days for different things or doing a three days on, two day off schedule, that variations, as creative as they may seem at the onset, can end up being quite cumbersome and frustrating when we get into them. If there's one thing people who are educators know is that students do best with consistency, just like they do with parenting skills in the home. So I just caution you, I'm not encouraging, I'm not discouraging creativity, but I'm just cautioning those choices should we be faced with them. Okay, and then I can get to my question. I've heard a variety of parents for different platforms either commenting on how their students are not in school very much during the day, maybe only one or two hours. And students that are slipping academically or who have IEPs or 504, who are either not being serviced or are being severely underserviced. And I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit how variations in schedules could exist, especially perhaps between the middle school and high school. Dana herself just said she's only got two classes on Tuesday. I think it might be important for the larger audience to understand why that could be the case. And then also, what would you recommend to family members who do feel that their students are not in school enough during the day or who do feel that their students are slipping academically or whose related services are not being fulfilled? What would you recommend for those parents to do to begin to tackle some of those concerns?
Great. Okay, thanks, Lori. Great questions. Well, on, on the scheduling piece, and it certainly, I think, is, is really a, a high school situation because the high school is, is so unique compared to the middle school as far as our schedule goes. Since the high school, a, a high school student's schedule is developed by choice and they choose the different classes that they want, obviously within certain guidelines. But because we, we have an eight-period day, our students will take anywhere from five to eight classes within that, those, those eight periods. During the pandemic, as we said earlier, you know, we've, we've gone with a block schedule. So we run four classes on Monday, the other four classes on Tuesday, and then we repeat that for Thursday and Friday. So Dana, I'm assuming you have during on Monday, all four of those classes, you have classes scheduled for. On Tuesday, I imagine one of those classes is your lunch and one is likely a study hall. So that for Dana, she has her four academics on the periods that fall on Monday and happens to have lunch and a study hall on the periods that fall on Tuesday. One of the things that we, we did in creating the current schedule is every student has a lunch period within their schedule at the high school. We obviously cannot put all of our students into the cafeteria for lunch. So we created a separate shorter lunch period where students eat lunch in their classrooms. So they're eating in smaller groups. That means that students have a 45-minute lunch period or longer for the block schedule lunch period now. And we scheduled the lunch period so that they're either at the very beginning of the day or the end of the day. That allows students to either arrive late if they have the lunch period at the beginning of the day or leave early if it's at the end of the day. And we did that strategically, again, so that we could reduce the number of students in the building at any one time. You know, the message, again, that, you know, the, the key message that high schools in particular are getting from, you know, the health departments is have as few kids in the building as you possibly can at any one time. Keep kids as distant from each other as possible and obviously make sure you're wearing masks. So by allowing students to have some flexibility in being able to arrive to school late or leave early, it provides us with the added benefit of being able to reduce the number of students in the building. So it, it kind of enhances the safety at that point as well. I think the, the question on what should parents do as far as, you know, if they're concerned with their child's, if the grades, if they're concerned, whether they're getting all of the supports necessary through either if they have a 504 plan or an IEP. Certainly, the first person that parent wants to contact is their child's school counselor. I would ask them to do that, you know, immediately. That should be your first point of contact. If it's just one class that students having difficulty with, certainly make contact with that teacher. If it's, if it's not a, a, a large issue with all your classes, but only in one or two classes, then certainly connect with the teacher to develop a plan or, as I said, to connect with the school counselor. If your child has an IEP, then you want to connect with your child's program monitor. And you can certainly connect with building administrators as well. You know, I think the, it, it's, it's important who you connect with, but I think it's mostly important that you make that connection. So whether it be the counselor, the administrator, the teacher, I think as long as, you know, we start that communication, we'll be able to get something in place for the students.
Thank you.
Scott, is there any way we could get the information that you just said, the steps on getting in touch with people, you know, guidance counselor, teacher on the website? I know when, when, you know, something that's, that's easily accessible for parents as a, as a resource.
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. We'll do, we'll do, you know, some of the questions that have been asked tonight and post those prominently on the website.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions from board members? Okay, I'm not hearing any at this time. Thank you so much, Scott. It was very informative and I hope it answered a lot of people's questions that have called in to watch the, um, the meeting tonight. We're going to open it up again for public comments. I saw that Kim Kane would like, if you would like to speak, you can put your name in the comments or I will give a chance to, for people who are calling in to speak up as well. So let's start with Kim.
Sorry for putting my comment too early. I really do not think I was part of the board. So I just want to say thank you to administration. You've done a wonderful job looking out for all the teachers, the students. I know it was a tough call. I know we were so hopeful to be open last Monday. And it just, it, it is what it is. I, you know, I wear several different hats, so I'll start first with, as a parent, my child who hated the hybrid schedule as a senior, I haven't seen him smile so much in the past two days, just to be back in for the past two days. So he's grateful for that. He feels safe. He's happy for the contact with his teachers and his peers. So, but, and it was the right time to reopen. So that's great. As a teacher, I'm sure my students would be like, Mrs. Kane was like so, so happy to see us. Yeah, it's, of course we want to be with the kids. And when you say, or I hear comments like, well, normal, it's so not normal right now. So we're doing the best we can. Absolutely. We, we as teacher, teachers want to be in front of the children and we're so happy to be back right now when it's safe and we know it's fluid. So just thank you to the board, thank you to administration, thank you to the parents. We appreciate your support. We absolutely are trying to do the best by your children. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I don't see any. I don't, okay. Dana?
Yeah, so there's just a few things I wanted to briefly touch on. First, I'm also, like Ms. Kane just said, I'm personally thrilled to be back in the school. I genuinely think I have learned more in the past two days than I have in the past month just because for me personally, it's so much easier to focus when I'm in the building. However, I think for AP classes specifically, there is still a serious struggle. I have friends who are straight A students who are likely Ivy-bound and are fully prepared to not pass their AP tests. That's not me bashing teachers. Teachers are doing the absolute best they can. I think a lot of it comes from the lack of stability that we're currently facing with the schedule and the on and off. So just in case people aren't already aware of that, I do just want to make it clear that there's a lot of students who are very nervous for AP tests that are coming up and do not feel prepared to pass them. I'm taking four AP tests and there's only one that I can say I am confident with and it's not content-based at all. It's just me writing essays. And then one other thing, I wasn't fully sure if I wanted to bring this up. It's a little bit off topic. To put it bluntly, I know me personally and a lot of other students are somewhat disappointed with the reaction to the events we saw last week. We, we witnessed what was a domestic terrorist attack and I think a lot of students feel that teachers' responses to this wasn't necessarily adequate. I'm lucky. I had three social studies classes in a row Thursday, so I talked about it. And a lot of teachers gave thoughts on it all day of my three social studies classes. We talked about it for a solid hour and a half, I think. However, there were a lot of teachers who passed by it and ignored it and went on with the tests and quizzes and assignments that they had planned for the day, which on one hand I do understand because we are in a time crunch for a lot of classes to try and shove a lot of material into the end of the quarter. But I do think that, that needed to be addressed a little bit more than it was. And I know a lot of students are upset that it was not by some teachers. So I fully believe that teachers and faculty are doing their best and I am grateful to be able to have a seat as a student rep on the board and to be able to speak my opinions and speak on behalf of students. So, but as a public comment, that is what I felt the need to share.
Are there any other, I, I don't see any other public comments in the comments section. Are there any phone callers, people calling in who have a public comment?
This is Liz Gorgliano again, 47, Robert Ford, Marlboro. You know, I, I didn't, I felt I said my piece in the beginning and I was fine letting it lie, but I have to give an unbelievable amount of credit to Dana for this last comment that she made. Given, I, I think the board needs to look at what she has said and really put it into perspective. This was coming from a student that not only excels academically, but willingly volunteers for time. And how many youth are actually willing to do that? And she is yet stepping forward and saying, hey, listen, I'm actually struggling a little bit. Dana, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I think it's very important that this is brought to light. If the board takes anything away from this, you can ignore every parent, every administrator, every teacher, every other comment. Just listen to what Dana has just said. And I am all about public safety. You know, I think that people, there, there's a degree of people that are able to make their own choices. Parents are able to make the choices for their children as to whether or not they feel like to go to school or not. But understand, not just, you know, we're saying that the social, the social and emotional aspect is priority, right? Well, if that's priority, then they need to be back in school. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, if there's one thing that this board takes away from this, and I really appreciate having this here in the first place, they need to listen to what Dana just said, that comment, and really take it to heart. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mary Rose Mead?
Hi, this is Mary Rose Mead. I live at 109 Church Street in Amston. You know, hearing all the comments tonight and seeing the, the presentation, I am a parent. I have an eighth grader. I had three other students go through the RAM system. I also work at the high school. What I feel like might be missing from some of our lens here is the fact that we are in a pandemic. And while we are talking about what other schools are doing, what we are doing, what is, what is missing from this conversation is the fact that people are dying from something that we do not fully understand. And what I see the district doing at this point, in this moment in time, is responding to what both the CDC and our local health departments are telling us needs to be our priority. And I can tell you that even, even as a parent, and to some degree as a teacher, there's part of me that wants to say, well, ye- yes, but my son is struggling being at home several days a week or, you know, my son wants to socialize or I want to be with more students. It's difficult to teach and to plan in this hybrid. Not only that, but you don't know what's going to happen from day to day. That said, right now in the state of Connecticut, restaurants are at 50%, stores are at 50% and I can't even go into my bank without making a phone call. Businesses, our insurance industry, lots of places are home. They're not even bringing people into their offices. I'm incredibly concerned at any suggestion to say that schools are different so that we should bring all students in and, and disregard what the public health experts are saying and disregard what the CDC is saying. And I think that what was set out and what continues to be the primary lens is that the physical health of our students has to be primary. Because without that, they're really, there's not going to be any learning if they're sick. I would suggest that there's a misconception that young people cannot be adversely affected by this. But I have four sons, two have gotten COVID, both from housemates of theirs. One was fine and the other has lingering heart issues. And this is a 20-year-old individual who is incredibly healthy. So we need to be very careful in this conversation about grades and social emotional learning when there is a public health crisis that we need, we need to make sure that we're keeping at the forefront. And I hope that the school district will continue, regardless of criticism they might receive or pushback. I do know that the district is trying to reach out to every single individual student as best they can. But if we lose sight of the fact that we're in a pandemic, I think that we've lost sight of a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from people who have phoned in?
Is someone able to comment twice?
Um, I believe so. Yes.
Okay, this is Liz Gorgliano again. I, I would just like to point out that, one, there is definitely some bias with some people that have views on whether or not we should go back to school or not. Some of those being RAM teachers specifically. Further, if, who is to say that we are following CBC guidelines? If, if other- If other schools are able to go back and they are following CBC guidelines, then what are we doing different? I'm going to go back to something that Sue said earlier during the conversation, and that was, where is the data? I am also a data person as well. I am all for being safe. I have family members as well that have health concerns as well. But where is the data? How is it that other schools are abiding by these CBC guidelines and other health districts, but for some reason RAM is not? How is it that we are not able to go back? Maybe we should be asking, how is it possible, and I know that we're back now, but how is it possible that we can sustain this? What can we do to ensure? And if there is an issue with six foot, if someone did make the comment about there being an issue with the six feet rule, then how can we fix it? Let's ask these questions. Let's be proactive. Instead of covering behind the, I don't want my kid to go to school or I myself don't want to go to school, or, you know what, we need to, we need to have this guise of, oh, public health, public health. How many, I want to know how many of these people that are afraid to either go to school themselves or have their children go to school have no problem walking into a home depot? Okay, I understand we're in a pandemic, but let's also think about this realistically and what we are doing to our children. At the end of the day, there is a responsibility to them first and foremost, and yes, it is to keep them safe, sure. But their mental health is something to be said as well. So again, I ask the board to take the comments from also parents as well, but teachers that have spoken up, whether they teach at our district or other districts. And to put that into perspective and really take in the whole picture here. And again, I'm going to go back to Dana. Take it from the student's perspective as well. We're all about saying our youth is the future and look what our youth have done over, you know, social issues and just being involved. Now is not the time to discount what our students are saying. Thank you.
Are there any comments from people calling in? Okay, I'm hearing none and I do not see any more comments, requests to speak in the comments section. So we will move to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. This is Kathleen.
Second in. Second in, Jean.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We end the meeting at 7:54. Thank you, everybody, for coming in. And have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.